First person is Mary Torres Vulcan.
Great. Mary, you have three minutes.
Good evening, Board of Trustees and Chancellor Claire. My name is Mary Torres Vulcan, and I am an adjunct faculty member, working as a research and instruction librarian at Skyline College. I have taught in the district for over seven years. I speak Spanish, and I use American Sign Language with students who may need assistance in either of those languages. I have been invited to be a guest lecturer in the Skyline Paralegal Program because of my long experience as a corporate law librarian. Why do I give you all of this information? Because my credentials, degree, experience are equal to those of my wonderful full-time colleagues, but my salary is not equal to theirs. Please take a look at the third row on your handout. The numbers show just how far behind SMCCD is in providing income parity for our adjunct faculty, who make up 55% of all instructors in SMCCD. Five other Bay Area colleges are ahead of us. Our county has the highest property values in the United States. However, our district's salaries and benefits are behind neighboring districts. Why is this? I come to work every day enthused to help students, excited about the worlds I can help open for them through the extensive resources of our library. I want to be able to continue working in this district, but when I see that our neighboring colleges, such as Marin, offer higher salaries to their adjunct instructors, I can't help but look at their direction, in their direction. I am worried that I cannot continue to advocate for and take care of my students if I cannot take care of myself and my family on a salary that continues to lag behind the cost of living. My roof is leaking right now, and I cannot afford to repair it. The rain has caused multiple cracks in my stucco, and I cannot afford to repair it. Everything is more expensive these days, from a dozen eggs to a tank of gas to a roof that doesn't leak. Again, my roof is leaking. The district agreed to move towards 85% parity in our last contract. It's time to make that promise a reality, starting right now. I urge you to do the right thing, negotiate in good faith, and provide our dedicated part-time faculty what we deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Are there any other comments? Who's next?
Vice President Pimentel, we next have Kate Disney, and if Lori Dotson can prepare as well, she's next after Kate.
Thank you, Candace. That's helpful to have the second person on deck.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Kate, please go ahead.
Good evening, trustees. My name is Kate Disney, and I've been an instructor at Mission College for many years, and I am currently serving as the Faculty Union President at the West Valley Mission Community College District. West Valley Mission is a lot like this district, and I won't name all the ways in which they are similar. Just last week, West Valley Mission and the Faculty Union signed a memorandum of understanding to greatly expand our part-time faculty healthcare program. This MOU is not perfect. There are implementation details that are yet to be worked out, but you know what? It's good enough to ensure that every faculty in our district that has at least 40% load will be given full healthcare coverage next year. And it's also good enough to ensure that there will be reimbursements to those multi-district faculty who carry a 40% load across multiple districts. You know, for a little bit of money, and a little bit of, I'm sorry, for a little bit of work on the part of a few employees, you can save your district a lot of money by implementing a similar program and signing a similar MOU with your faculty union. The legislature has spoken. They passed AB 190. The governor has spoken. We have $200 million in ongoing money in the state's budget. The chancellor has spoken and has given this district guidance and information about how to implement AB 190. So barring some insurmountable obstacle, which we know there is none, this board has a moral and ethical duty to comply with AB 190. You need to do the people's business. The people have spoken. Get this done. Get your part-time faculty healthcare program going. Work with your union. Get it done. Don't stonewall. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kate, and it's nice to finally meet you in person. Who's next?
Lori Dotson is next, and then Joan Dentler.
Thank you.
I feel like I have support back here. This is great. Hi, I'm Lori Dotson, and I'm not from this district. I'm actually from the West Valley Mission District, and I'm so excited to be here today. I am actually, I have brand-new tenured faculty as of a week ago, so I'm very excited about that. However, I was an adjunct faculty for six years over at Mission College. So having parity between part-time and full-time is extremely important to me and my heart, because I was adjunct faculty for six years, and I can tell you, having parity and being able to take care of myself with the medical would have been extremely helpful. So I know that all of our districts here in California have a charge for social justice, for equity, and for inclusion. And I'm thinking, when I think about inclusion, inclusion means that we want to make sure that everyone is welcome and everyone is part of a membership, part of our community. Whether you are a student, whether you're a chancellor, an administrator, whether you are full-time or part-time faculty, we get to make sure that all of our members of our community are taken care of. And we do such a wonderful job taking care of our students, and we can do more for our faculty, especially for our part-time medical, for part-timers. When I think about equity, well, equity is about making sure that everyone's needs are met. Medical care and health benefits is a basic need. It is a basic need that we all have. And this charge, if you act, and you act very quickly, can take care of that basic need for part-timers, to make sure that they have the adequate medical and health coverage that they need to move forward in life. Also, I've learned that there has been, the California Federation also put out a survey, and noticed that there were, for part-timers, 44%, that's almost half of the people who were surveyed, couldn't actually access medical care because they couldn't afford it. You know what? You are in a position to remove that barrier right now. You can remove that barrier by making sure that part-timers actually have the same and full benefits as full-time part-timers, as full-time timers. Equity is not going to cost the district anything. This is, as Kate said, coming from our governor, okay? This isn't going to cost any money. And what's nice about having this happen is it makes employees like me, it makes us feel valued, it makes us feel supported, that we are members of our community.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Lori. Appreciate you coming over to share your point of view with us. Joan? And who's next, after Joan?
Monica Malamud.
Thank you. Go ahead, Joan.
Good evening. My name is Joan Dentler, and I am here on behalf of State Senator Josh Becker this evening. He wrote a letter to the board, to Dr. Petritas and the board, which I would like to read for the minutes. "Dr. Petritas and Board Members, Last fall, a member of my staff addressed the board on my behalf, urging the district to participate in the state's program to reimburse college districts that provide health insurance to part-time faculty. In the budget passed earlier this year, funding for the program was increased by $200 million with the goal of spurring participation by our community colleges, therefore increasing the number of staff members receiving insurance coverage. I'm sure you would agree that these employees are critical to the success of our community colleges. Many of these workers need to work multiple jobs in order to make ends meet. The extra thousands of dollars they pay to receive insurance only makes the situation worse. I am pleased that Governor Newsom's 2023-24 budget proposes to continue funding the important program and provide additional opportunities for part-time faculty to receive health insurance coverage. I hope that the San Mateo County Community College District will join with the eight other districts that have already opted into this program. Sincerely, Josh Becker, Senator, 13th District." Thank you.
Thank you very much, Joan. Monica? And is there anyone after Monica? Go ahead, Monica. Thank you.
Monica Malamud, FT 1493 President, a member of negotiating team. Our contract expired in June of last year, so it's been over a year now since the union sunshined its negotiation proposals. And these long negotiations, they're having an impact on our faculty, both financially and emotionally. Our faculty didn't hesitate to go above and beyond to continue to serve our students during the pandemic. We supported our students not only academically, but in other ways too. It was exhausting. When we asked you, the board, to reopen negotiations for economic issues due to a paltry 0.5% salary increase last year, when the revenue from property taxes was much higher, you told us that we would deal with it when we started negotiating the whole contract, since we were so close to doing so. Our union also advocated at the state level for funding that would allow districts to offer health care for part-time faculty at no cost to the district. The money is there, in the state budget. Other districts have reached agreement for full implementation of AB 190, but not our district. We feel very unsupported by our district. Faculty are experiencing very real economic pressures. Our district made a commitment to part-time parity, but it is not following through. It is unconscionable that our district will not agree to offer our part-time faculty the same healthcare that other employees of the district receive, when there's money in the state budget to be reimbursed for this, so it will not affect our district's budget. Even you, board members, get the benefit of district health plans. The faculty morale is low. However, our faculty are not ready to settle for a contract that does not address their most basic needs. We've heard promises. We even had contract language with a commitment towards part-time parity. But promises and commitment don't put foot on the table, don't pay rent, don't heal you when you're sick. Our district's image in the community, and I would say around the state, has been tarnished in recent years. And we know that the board is trying to reverse this, in part by offering free college. And while it is very important to take care of our students, it's just important to take care of the faculty that our students rely on in order to get an excellent education. Our union wants to lift up this district. We want to continue providing an excellent education for our students. We want our district to be able to attract excellent new faculty and not lose the great ones we have. Please do the right thing and direct the district's negotiating team to work towards a good contract that shows that the district values and respects faculty. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Monica. Karen?
Hi, everyone. My name is Karen Chan. I'm the chief negotiator for the West Valley Mission Federation of Teachers and the executive director. I've been a labor negotiator for 20 years. I think that one of the things that we're talking about today is about healthcare as a human right. And one of the things that you guys have opportunity to do is further healthcare as a human right and treat it as a right versus a commodity to be negotiated and to be traded with, with your union. And that's one thing that I urge you to do as a human being, and probably why you decided to be an elected official. I don't think you came into the job of being an elected official to say, hey, I want to deny my faculty the right to have healthcare when they are facing cancer. I want to deny my faculty the right to be able to give birth and have a baby without astronomical costs. I don't think any of us are in this room for that purpose. But what the healthcare system has done is put us in these positions. We have all been gouged by Kaiser, Blue Shield, Anthem, United Healthcare. It is a huge thing to consider for districts, that cost of healthcare. But what we have done with AB 190 is remove you from having to think about that cost of healthcare. Instead, the state has taken responsibility for funding that healthcare. So all you have to do is to say, yes, I agree with the faculty that healthcare is a human right. And I agree that when our part-time faculty, who are housing insecure, healthcare insecure, job insecure, they at least have the right to be able to know that they can go to the emergency room if they're having heart palpitations, that they can have access to medication without having to decide, am I going to cut my pills in half because I can't afford the high copays? So I urge all of us to think about this, not in the view of a traditional negotiations between labor and management, or between employer and employee, but think about this as we have the ability to make healthcare a human right in the face of a healthcare industry that wants to treat it like a commodity. And so it's really easy. Everything is set up. All you have to do is front the expenses for providing healthcare for anyone that works 40% and to reimburse the freeway flyers who work 40% at two districts. The state will reimburse you at that rate, at 100% for doing that. And if they don't reimburse you, I'm pretty sure all of us will be at the state telling them they need to provide more money. So I urge all of us to take the time and say, this is something we can do together. We can provide healthcare for some of our most precarious employees who are in the classroom with our students every day. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Bell, are there any other people to comment?
Yes, Vice President Pimentel, I do have five people on Zoom that would like to comment.
Thank you. May I have the first person on Zoom to talk?
The first person is Jennifer Shinowski.
Jennifer, you have three minutes. Go ahead, please.
Thank you so much. My name is Jennifer Shinowski. I'm a chemistry teacher at Merritt College and president of the Peralta Federation of Teachers, Local 1603. I'm here tonight to urge the board to provide direction to your district negotiating team to immediately settle the details of part-time healthcare with the San Mateo County Community College Federation of Teachers, Local 1493. If the last three years have taught us nothing else, I really hope that it's shown everyone that without our health, we really have nothing. And good health is underpinned by access to good healthcare. In this country, access to good healthcare translates into access to health insurance. Through advocacy by the California Federation of Teachers, the state's given you the opportunity to provide the majority of your faculty, 55% of whom are part-time, with quality, affordable medical plans at no net cost to your district. You have the money. You have samples of language. You have everything you need to provide the medical coverage that so many of us take for granted to that largest group of district workers. I urge you to join other California districts, including the Peralta Colleges, in taking advantage of this generous offer and do the right thing by negotiating the details of part-time healthcare immediately. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Who's our next speaker?
Next, we have Joaquin Rivera.
Joaquin, please go ahead. You have three minutes.
Good afternoon, trustees. My name is Joaquin Rivera. I am a Skyline Chemistry Professor of 33 years, and I am co-Vice President and Chief Negotiator of the AFT 1493. Integrity and trust are important. Last year, when we got a 0.52% raise and the increases in property taxes were 4.99, we came to you and asked you to reopen negotiations. You told us, no, you're ready to start negotiating again. We'll take care when we negotiate the next round. Well, guess what? The next round is here. A couple of years ago, when we were negotiating a parity, we wanted a multi-year agreement to reach parity. We were at the end of the contract, and you did not want to go into the next contract. Instead, you made a commitment, and I'm going to read you the language in the contract. "The district acknowledges that parity is not an abstract concept, but a clear goal that is contractually obligated to achieve. To that end, the district further acknowledges that parity cannot be achieved without the district allocating funds to adjunct compensation over and above faculty raises. The district, therefore, commits to dedicating additional funding for instructional adjunct salary increases above and beyond salary increases for all faculty until parity is achieved. You proposed this language. Act on it. An extra 1% will not do it. Please keep your word. We do not want to lose faith in you. Thank you."
Thank you very much, Joaquin. Who's our next speaker?
The next person is Margaret Nevin.
Margaret, you have three minutes. Please go ahead.
Hi, good evening. My name is Margaret, and I'm Zooming from West Valley College, where I have taught art part-time for 16 years. Last week, our district and West Valley Mission Federation of Teachers signed an MOU that provides health insurance for part-time faculty, agreeing to the three requirements that qualify for 100% reimbursement from the state: Providing faculty with a 40% load, the same health insurance provided to full-timers; Providing that health insurance at the same cost to the faculty; Paying a reimbursement stipend to faculty teaching a 40% load between multiple districts. This is the most important and life-changing development for part-time faculty that I have seen in my 26 years in the California Community College system. It's about time. I'm here to encourage you to agree to do the same. Before this agreement in our district, part-timers with a 40% load could apply to West Valley for a premium reimbursement of up to $2,700 every six months. The district received no reimbursement from the state. While this stipend was a big help with paying part of premium costs, it did not help with deductibles or copays. After an Affordable Care Act subsidy, I pay $565 a month for a covered California Kaiser plan with a $6,000 annual deductible and high copays for doctor visits, x-rays, emergency visits, and other services. I understand you have a similar reimbursement policy. That's great, but it's not good enough, especially since you could be reimbursed 100% for providing part-time faculty the same insurance you provide to full-timers. The current policy discourages faculty from going to the doctor when they are ill. A recent CFT survey found that 44% of part-time faculty put off going to see a doctor because we cannot afford it. Part-time faculty are under great stress when they have to worry about having or not having health insurance. I am certain that you have long-term part-time faculty like me in your district. There are not enough full-time teaching jobs. Part-time teachers are as dedicated to students as any full-timer. We will inevitably need to go to a doctor for preventative care, illness, pregnancy, or any of a long list of reasons. Help us get there. Financial stress can make one ill. Providing part-timers the same insurance as you provide full-time faculty is the right thing to do. Healthy faculty will use less sick days. Their chances of living longer improve. Lowering stress will allow faculty to stay focused on students and teaching. Community is the first and most important word in community college. Community members take care of each other for the benefit of the community. Okay.
Thank you, Margaret. Who's next?
Bye-bye.
Next, we have Jeffrey Johnson.
Jeffrey, please go ahead. You have three minutes.
Yes, my name is Jeffrey Johnson. I am speaking on behalf of the Southwestern College Education Association. I sit on their executive committee and a past negotiating team member. We are one of the eight districts which have managed to negotiate full-time equivalent healthcare for our adjuncts, teaching over 40% of a full-time load, and will be participating from fall in a multi-district program. And I'm here to talk a little bit about the why and the how. First, the why. We've had many horror stories with regard to our adjuncts, and I'll just let you know, Southwestern College is the closest college, community college, to the Mexican border in the state of California. We're eight miles away, and unfortunately, many of our adjunct faculty members have had to seek healthcare. One horror story I can recall is of an adjunct needing an emergency appendectomy who drove himself across the border to get that taken care of, and because he still didn't have insurance, ended up having to pay a $10,000 bill. I frequently get asked questions about, you know, knowing about any, you know, good dentists in Tijuana. And we hear about this from our faculty. That shouldn't be happening. You know, the other reason that we're looking at this is just as you're experiencing right now, you know that West Valley Mission has just basically negotiated AB 190 compliant healthcare. I wanted to let you know, San Diego and the Grossmont-Culiacca Community College Districts have managed to accomplish that. And in the past, because they've had such strong, robust healthcare programs, it actually impeded our encroachment. I recall being asked by the Humanities Chair, Peter Boland, about, you know, last-minute questions if I knew any humanities instructors. And I've heard of similar things happening in our EMT program and with our chemistry program as well. And so this is one of the things we had to do. We had to do something to kind of guarantee, because if faculty aren't going to get their healthcare, they're going to go somewhere else. Now, the thing I want to talk about here is why the governing board was sold. The governing board was going to put out a $600,000 for basically adjunct healthcare. That healthcare would have only covered the adjuncts themselves and not their dependents. Well, what we found is whereby implementing this plan, we could save the district $600,000. They basically could be heroes at zero cost. And in the process of doing this, the money that they had in addition to that allowed them to turn around and provide adjunct faculty from fall of this year with dental and vision as well. That keeps faculty. The thing that I would add to this is that, you know, in addition to doing this, it also, you know, one of the things we were able to do is, and so you're saying, well, there's this concern over where's the money going to come from? What happens if the money runs out? Well, we put language into the contract. If you are going to pay $600,000, then we're willing to say, run over $600,000, then we can mitigate that language. But that's not going to be an issue. Please do the right thing by your faculty. Provide them the healthcare they need.
Thanks very much, Jeffrey. Ms. Bell, who's next?
Next, we have Lacey Barnes.
Lacey, please go ahead. You have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Lacey Barnes. I am actually current past president of State Center Federation of Teachers, Local 1533, out in the Central Valley. That's Fresno, Clovis, Reedley, and Madera. Our unions represent both full and part-time faculty educators. I'm here today, however, on behalf of the 85,000 members of CFT as the Senior Vice President of CFT, a union of educators and classified professionals. I won't take a lot of your time, because most of the speakers before me have laid out cogent arguments of the facts that support our position to offer part-time faculty members healthcare. I'll simply use an analogy to further urge you to accept the state funding and direct your bargaining team to negotiate the full implementation of part-time healthcare. The CFT, the governor, the state chancellor's office, the legislature, we've already carried the baton this far. All you need to do is carry the baton across the finish line and make this a reality. Too many part-time faculty of California's community college system have gone without healthcare benefits far too long, and it forces many of us out of our critical jobs and ultimately harms our ability to be there for students. Help them be there for students. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Lacey. Who's next?
Next, we have Belinda Loom.
Belinda, you have three minutes. Please go ahead.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Dr. Belinda Loom, and I'm the Chief Negotiator for the Los Rios College Federation of Teachers in Sacramento, AFT 2279. And we're one of the five districts that have already actively implemented the new part-time healthcare benefit, that includes access to full-time benefits at the .4 assignment level and the multi-district reimbursement plan. And I'm here today to support AFT 1493's call for improving the part-time health benefit at your campus. Now more than ever, we know that our working conditions are students' learning conditions, and that ensuring that your workforce is healthy and has access to preventative care and mental health services ensures that your students have access to ins- and mental health services ensures that your students have access to instructors who are at their best. Quality and affordable health insurance for our part-time faculty who make up the majority of our workforce is one way that we create greater classroom stability for our students. Signing in this part-time healthcare plan saves our, currently for Los Rios, saves our part-time faculty $600 per month and $6,000 per year that goes right into their take-home pay. Despite the $200 million infusion into the state budget across the state, we've heard a lot of misinformation. And one of the things I really want to do is to proactively address that here. Assumption one is that every part-time faculty will get, getting, this health insurance will overwhelm the HR department or system. In Los Rios, we're the second-largest local in the state. We represent over 1,200 part-time faculty members, and currently, a little over 300 or 25% of our part-time faculty use our Los Rios benefits. Many other part-timers are on the health insurance of their partners or spouses or have access to health insurance from their full-time jobs. It is a false assumption that all part-time faculty members that you employ will need this health insurance benefit, although it is important for those who do need access. Assumption number, false assumption number two, that no district will receive 100% reimbursement for the program, or that, the other assumption we've heard is that districts will not receive any money at all. The law is very clear, as are the directions from state chancellor's office. Districts who negotiate the programs will receive 100% reimbursement, and my district expects to receive this. And the timely implementation by your district means that you can actually build back to July 1 of the past year. In the event that there is a shortfall, you can always, that your negotiating team can always possibly include a reopener, if it even becomes necessary. And then finally, the insurance itself will cost the district too much money. Right now, your district spends more money with its current plan than if you simply signed in this, these part-time health benefits. And I want to note that in my district, negotiating the new benefit is saving us almost $4.5 million a year. Previously, we had only received 2% reimbursement. If the COVID pandemic has taught us anything, it is that health is precarious, and that, as our previous speaker noted, healthcare should be a human right. And now, more than ever, we need to make sure that we take care of one another and put the community back in community college. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other speakers, Ms. Bell?
Yes, we do have next Sue Broxholm.
Sue, please go ahead. You have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Sue Broxholm, and I teach mathematics at Skyline College part-time and also at College of Alameda part-time. Over 20 years at Skyline College and 18 years at College of Alameda. College of Alameda is in the Peralta District, where we part-time faculty are now receiving parity pay, the same pay per course as our full-time counterparts. We will also now begin receiving healthcare insurance, because the Peralta District decided to take advantage of the $200 million for healthcare for a part-time faculty funded by the state. I believe it's imperative for the San Mateo District to do the same. We in the community college just talk a lot about equity, but how can we expect anyone, including students and the public, to take us seriously when our faculty works under an inequitable two-tiered system of tenured and adjunct professors being paid at different scales for the same work, with one tier not even receiving healthcare insurance and few opportunities for advancement? In our last contract, San Mateo District agreed to raise parity 85%. We need San Mateo to make good on their promise and raise part-time salaries to meet this goal in this contract. Providing healthcare insurance to part-time faculty will not solve every problem that needs to be fixed when reforming our unfair faculty labor system, but it will be a giant step forward. Please do the right thing and take advantage of the $200 million funding for healthcare for your part-time faculty now. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sue. Is there anyone else who would like to comment in the public?
Next, we have Jim Mahler.
Jim, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, board members and chancellor. I'm Jim Mahler. I'm president of the Community College Council of the CFT. That's the body that represents all of the community college locals within the state of California under the CFT/AFT umbrella. So I'm here to speak to you tonight to the same issue regarding the adjunct healthcare and adjunct equity. I do want to applaud you, board members and chancellor, for the professionalism for which you've been handling the speakers tonight, despite probably not hearing things you want to hear. I've been in several board meetings up and down the state, and that's not always the case, so I applaud you for that. I'd like to also employ you, though, to extend your professionalism to the actual treatment of your part-time faculty. You know, actions speak much louder than words, and the fact that your adjunct faculty still don't have a fully-paid healthcare system in place, despite the resources your district has, is really unconscionable. You've heard tonight from several speakers that have spoken about the settlements they've made throughout the district. I also represent our local locally in San Diego and Rosemont-Cuyamaca. In those two community college districts, we settled last semester. We're saving those two districts over $10 million a year, and we have about 2,500 part-time faculty members, and there's yet to be a single problem with this new insurance plan in place now going on our second semester. So the logistics of if you can handle it or not, I think we've been able to demonstrate pretty aptly that that's not the case, and it's not as overwhelming a task as you might fear it might be. The other thing to keep in mind is whatever you are paying out for adjunct healthcare now, you're going to get all of that back. So we understand that San Mateo is a very wealthy district and has excessive amounts of resources available, but why not take an extra $300,000, right? I'm sure it can be put to good use. And the other fact that you'll be allowing your part-time faculty and by extension, their families, to now have an affordable healthcare available to them is a good thing to do for the district and for the community. You know, we are a community college, and the word "community" is in our name for a reason. So your adjunct faculty are part of our community, and they need to be treated as important members and as valued members of our community. There's no reason, there's no way anyone can make an argument that a full-time faculty member doing the exact same work as a part-time faculty member should have better pay or better benefits. So I really urge you to not only address the healthcare issue, which won't cost the district a dime, and actually will end up saving you money, but also the pay equity issue that's outstanding between the salaries of part-timers and full-timers. There's no reason to have a long time to implement that. You all could do that now, because you have the resources available to you to make that happen overnight. It's just a matter of having the political will and the political courage in order to do so. So I really urge you to do that, because soon you will soon see that San Mateo starts to be looked down on throughout the state. Throughout the state, everyone is aware.
Thank you very much, Jim. Appreciate your input. Are there any other speakers?
We have one more speaker, Lori Slickton.
Lori, you have three minutes. Please go ahead.
Good evening. I'm Lori Slickton. I've been a professor of anthropology at Skyline for 30 years. I'm here to support the proposed AFT contract and to emphasize the need to improve the access to reasonable accommodations under the ADA. It's required under the ADA that persons seeking accommodations engage in an interactive process. This process is broken in the SMCCD. In a good-faith effort, faculty like myself make repeated requests to administrators for accommodations. This good-faith effort to engage in the interactive process is not reciprocated by HR in a timely manner. Months and years can go by without result. The AFT's proposal is a humble, no-cost, practical step in a positive direction. The AFT, we propose that HR must provide status updates within 30 days of request for accommodation, appeal process available. That's it. Professional work standards demand that I work within deadlines. If a student emails me for assistance, can I wait for a month or more to respond? No. In fact, our students have wonderful resources through the Disability and Education Access Centers. Employees have no such resource. HR does not respond promptly to legitimate requests, rendering their interactive process fallow. I have suffered eye pain, headaches, and repeated eye infections related to the eye strain while I push through work without accommodations. This has directly interfered with my ability to professionally serve our students and meet my contractual obligations. Since 2015, I've qualified for reasonable accommodations. The following are a few examples of excessive delays. New inventive platform for student assessments and program updates. SMCCD took 12 months. That's current right now. Four months before HR acted to purchase necessary technology during the early months of COVID so that I could learn to teach and work remotely. Computer software and other technology took a year. It took four years, four years for my office to be put together in a functional, ergonomic fashion. How can anyone work under these conditions and also be expected to do comprehensive program review and be evaluated as a faculty member? The professional demands don't end, even when accommodations are not provided. I urge you to support the proposed AFT contract and to support people with disabilities. Thank you.
Ms. Bell, can I assume there are no other speakers?
That is the last one.
I'd like to extend a very special thank you to our colleagues from West Valley Mission who took the time to come all the way down here to speak to us. Thank you very much. We appreciate your perspectives. Thank you to the AFT members who have been consistently raising these issues to us. We hear you. Thank you very much. And thank you to Senator Becker and his staff, Joan, for putting the time into being here tonight.